All right, let's call this meeting, uh, to order. Regular council meeting Monday, August 18th, 2025. It's 5:01 PM. And we'll request everybody turn their cell phones down and we'll get a roll call, please.
Mr. Adelman?
Here.
Mr. Higginson?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Prandis?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, here. Uh, Stanford pledge of allegiance, take your hat off, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody standing?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and, Lord, we just invite your presence to guide the council and the decisions that they need to make tonight. And we just, uh, Lord, we lift up this war in Ukraine and we just ask for your peace, that Ukraine, uh, peace between the two parties that are fighting. And, uh, Lord, just give the council wisdom and all the decisions that they make. And so we just thank you for your presence in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, Don. All right, uh, get a approval of minutes, uh, the approval of agenda, I guess. Get a motion, please.
Some.
All in favor? Prove 5:00. Public comment, Stan, please. Give your first name, please, or your name or whatever.
My name is Josh Lloyd. I had a pre-intending thing planned today, but I changed one of mine. I said, fight a fire with fire. Uh, but there is one piece that I want to say. Courtney, when I first came here and saw you engaging with citizens, I thought you were going to be my biggest obstacle. But I was wrong. You've become the person that messes up, represents me in this room. I appreciate your words and having a mind of backbone and your ability to listen, not to defend, but to understand. I want to thank you publicly, whether it carries weight or not. The other thing that I wasn't going to mention, but it has to be talked about, is that we've had recalls since the last meeting that are extremely long. The fire study came out and said eighty-five percent of the time, we don't have three people in there. This, this has to represent failure. It has to represent a need to improve. We had a bad staffing situation, I understand, but we currently have a bad situation that no one seems to want to understand. It needs to be better somehow, some way. As a citizen, I've talked to a potential fire chief who says he can fill it. I've seen many, many, many ways that you can get people in here, many. I'm, I'm talking things we probably would never explore, like getting prisoners to do firework. There's so many ways to do this. And one way is just to hold the boy accountable to the three people. If we're requiring them to have paramedics for all staff, that's the wrong way to do it. If we have two paramedics in there, the third person doesn't need to be a paramedic and we can roll an engine. So I ask you, please, please, take a look at it because obviously I'm at the end. And against my better judgment, I'm, I'm just going to be speechless today on it because I'm, I'm so mad about it. It's been going on now for years' time. Every time we talk about it, we talk about how the excuse, or not, not the excuse, I guess, but how it was bad. So we made it a little better, but we have to continue to make it a little better. And at the end of the five years, we better have it figured out or we haven't.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, get approval of minutes, uh, get a motion to approve, uh, minutes of the regular council meeting held on August 4th, 2025. Motion, please?
Some.
Second, uh, all in favor? All right, Board of Officers, Finance, approval of claims to be paid August 2nd through the 15th, 2025 for the amount of?
Three hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and thirty-three cents. Motion.
Senator.
Tracy, please.
Mr. Adelman?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson? Mr. Morris?
Yeah.
Mr. Prandis?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, attorney report?
No, report just seen.
No report. We get a report of our, uh, staff, uh, department heads. Sonia, please.
I have a couple of quick things for you, Mayor, and now hand it over to Shawna. Uh, she's going to give the community development portal report. And then I also asked Brandon just to provide a brief engineering report because there's just so many things going on. But, uh, from my end, I just wanted to, uh, remind everyone that schools are starting this week and there is still construction going on. Um, even, even on our local roads, uh, please just be safe and, and watch her, watch her kids. They start walking to the club even more. Also wanted to give an update, uh, with Chief Snyder not able to be here tonight. The ambulance, uh, has been shipped into the middle of 2025. So as a reminder, Jason Griffin started as our chief in June of 2022. We approved the purchase of the ambulance in that season's of gen, uh, that season's blood cycle. So we ordered the ambulance and had it all stacked out, uh, January 1st of 2023. And we were told then it was a two to a two and a half year wait period. Uh, it is now being pushed well into 26. So it is on a little bit of a delay. It's unfortunate, it's probably going to be a year behind, uh, but we do feel like, um, you know, that it's, it should hold true to that middle of the year next year. It seems to be what the manufacturer is, is relaying. So that's kind of the word from the chiefs in the world. Also wanted to just say that our, our capital improving, our capital improvement budget, as well as our operating budget, is starting to, is starting to ramp up. So if there are needs, wants, uh, ideas, uh, we've been trying to gather estimates and start talking about priorities as a staff team. Uh, but if the board wants to add to that, you know, now you really get time to, you know, throw those ideas out, let us know. Uh, talk to appropriate, uh, department heads or even myself, whatever, if you had something in the back of your mind. We're going to start relaying those, uh, those into our capital over the next year. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to mention that, um, I haven't picked a day or, or even what to call this thing yet. Uh, but I'm committing, uh, to getting out there about quarterly, uh, just to try to engage in friendly conversation. I don't want to call it a, uh, like remote office hours or anything like that, but I just do think that if people are starting to ramp up and interested in running in the next, uh, election, uh, now is a really good time for them to start adding some input and maybe some elected leadership, uh, handbooks made available and things like that. So they can kind of start to wrap their mind around, uh, the work that you guys have to do every day. So, uh, I'm going to start putting myself out there about quarterly to try to encourage residents to come and meet with me, talk with me. If they have questions, they want to know anything, so stay tuned for that. I'll, I'll get that, uh, promoted for September, I'll do the first one. Uh, but if there's topics, uh, in that sort of discussion that you guys would like to talk about or, uh, you know, enhance, let me know. And I will certainly make myself available to, uh, the public. And that's all I have.
Well, yeah, I want to add to that. Last week, we had both ambulances go down at the same time. We had one from the town of Lloyd who goes down, went down, one we were borrowing. We went to and we tried to lease amb- ambulances right now. And until we get our ambulance back, it looks like this is the way it is. We've had maintenance on them. I mean, I see them up to Boucher all the time. They're all there and they're not, they're just junk is what they are. And the best thing we do is get our, get a new ambulance soon as we can, and we're trying to. But, um, that's some more information on that. All right. Don?
All right. It's the community development quarterly report for May through Ju-, or I'm sorry, May through August. Um, we'll start with new construction and development. Storage Queen just finished its, um, phase two. And I think they have one more phase, um, that they will be. Um, Manchester Trails construction, they have completed or are almost done completing ten of the fourplex buildings. They have one single family home and one duplex that they have finished. Um, Sandbury has thirteen single family homes they are in the process of completing. And then one I forgot to add was Rockinlock Storage. They are, they just applied for stage, or excuse me, phase two of their project. They have one more phase that will come next year. Um, other projects, I attended the police memorial breakfast as a guest. I also attended, um, special program assistance conference through IDAC, that's the SPAC. Um, and I had a meeting with them in Dixon afterwards that Brandon, um, also attended with me. I completed Tyler training for permitting and licensing. We hosted, um, two Lake Victoria fishing days. Um, the first one was, they commented that the first one was, um, their most attended event this year, this summer. Um, we did just host the second one, but I haven't gotten a final count on that one yet. Um, they are looking to do, uh, an evening, um, fishing event that once school started, they wanted to get into that. That will come sometime in September, they're hoping. Um, I attended and presented at the Beloit 200 annual meeting. And then directly following that, the Beloit 200 strategic planning session for the Gardner corridor. I attended Northern Illinois Land Bank Board of Trustees meeting. And then for the PCC, we are holding regular meetings. We completed, um, or we're getting ready to complete another bulk map amendment rezoning from rural residential to R1. It is a better fit for regular single family homes for that subdivision. It's the Harold Drive, um, arm subdivision and it, I listed the streets that that includes. It's approximately fifty, fifty to seventy, um, single family home properties. The zoning map amendments are, uh, on track for publishing in March. We have to, annually, we have to update our, um, zoning map. And this will be completed for, uh, 2026 to be in compliance. Um, for permits, we are, right now, um, permit review uses a large quantity of time. Sometimes these permits require other, um, input from zoning, engineering, legal. And approximately forty to fifty, um, permits are being reviewed each month. That's a little bit on the lower end, um, this season. It seems like it's kind of ramping up and when we thought it would be starting to slow down. Um, this equates to about fifteen to or so hours a week.
I was hoping you would talk a little bit about Tyler and what people could do on our website.
So, yep, so, um, and Tyler, with Tyler, part of the, um, training that we just went through, you are able to apply for all of your permits and licensing online now. Um, we have, we have it on the city's website and then we also on your, on app, on your phone. Um, you can do all of it through there. So we have had a couple of permits that have been submitted that way. It's, it's, we're just starting. It's working out really nice. Um, so they can submit everything through there and then, um, it comes to us, we get an email. We send it off to whoever needs to look at it and review it. And then we can make, internally, we can make comments to each other if we need someone else, um, from the committee, or excuse me, the, the applicant, we can let them know that, uh, we need that information back. Um, so it's, we're looking forward to using it a little bit more, we're just getting into it right now. Um, for pre-annexations, we have two established business locations on Curry Hill Road. One is in the zoning, um, process right now to have the, their, um, pre-annexation agreement, uh, amended. And the second one contacted us last week and asked to pre-annex into the city. The only reason there are pre-annexes is because we have one more, um, property before they are fully contiguous. After that, they will then just do the annexation. But, um, we're excited for those, those, um, things coming forward. And then for municipal code enforcement, they are working right now through the summer about forty hours a week. Um, this is, they are averaging five to 10 cases proceeding to administrative hearing each month. And just to put that into perspective, in the last three years total, the entire time, we've had less than a handful of cases go proceed to administrative hearing. That's not because we got compliance, it's just for failure to get them all the way to the end process. So, um, municipal code is working out really well for us. And then that's all I have. If you don't have any questions, then I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Okay, Brandon.
So you guys should have a copy of all of this, so I'll try to be brief. Um, I'm going to break these project updates down into sewers, streets, and then miscellaneous. So Hayes Avenue, that's the sewer project that was substantially completed last year with a little bit of the work that carried over into this year. That project is now done and complete. There are a few closeout items that we need to do. Um, and then we need to, we owe Jeff some as-built apartment records. So RT, you might believe has finalized that stuff and will get that over to Jeff right away. But on your guys' end, that project is closed out. The lift station project, um, so we are still working on finalizing the property acquisition, um, with Arlene Rounds. That is the site where the actual lift station will be, um, posted. Um, the attorneys have to work through some historical easement issues, um, of, you know, basically easement that we're not dedicated properly to the next property owner, so that's being worked out right now. Once that is finalized and we know that the lift station can't go on that site, um, Fairgram will complete the remaining design efforts, which we're ninety-five percent complete on that project. So it's not a lot remaining. Um, and then we will work with the attorneys to collect the remaining easements for the project. The IBA sewer, sewer rent study, that's obviously on your guys' agenda tonight, has been talked about in the last few meetings. Um, so Fairgram last week did provide the revised breakdowns of the five, seven, and ten-year options. So, um, that will be discussed, uh, coming up here shortly. On the street side, uh, the inlet and catch basin replacement project is now totally complete. Um, the contractor DPI construction just last week completed some repairs over at Park and Gardner intersection. Uh, we're having an issue with Midstates concrete trucks cutting that corner and damaging some of the sidewalk. Um, so we had, once, once that was first damaged after it was constructed, we did talk with Midstates as a staff. They had honored to pay for the repairs of that sidewalk. Um, it's not going to be something that we have to pay for out of our pocket. Um, so now we're just waiting on the contractor to do his final quantities and a breakdown of what those repairs cost. And then we will work with Midstates to get that paid. And, um, so we're anticipating sometime in September, probably the next meeting, or I'm sorry, the second meeting of September, we'll have final quantities and a final paid application to present to you guys. The Manchester Road project, um, that, so we're through the design, through the bidding process, bids came in under our expectations, which was good. We're going, we should be able to fully, um, spend all of our, uh, obligated RDI funds. Um, construction is starting September 4th, um, with just traffic control items. But then the first week of Sept-, the first full week of September is when construction is actually going to start. So here in the next couple of weeks, us as staff, we're going to be giving, um, letters out to business owners, social media notifications, everything like that, to just notify the public of the upcoming construction delays. For your guys' sake, just know the road is not going to be closed at any time. Full access is still going to be, um, allowable. Contractor will have flaggers at different stages of the operation, but that road will be usable, um, throughout construction. Uh, and then the final completion, they are estimating about four weeks for construction. So, um, should be by the first, first week of October, that project will be completed. Uh, this is an old one, but back in twenty, I believe, 2021, um, the city was approached by DCEO for a, um, a grant application that we partnered with Winnebago County, um, to get actually a hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement for past projects. Um, we are still waiting on the final approval on that, but Winnebago County earlier this year did ask for some supporting documentation, um, that they could then turn into DCEO to get the reimbursement. Um, I have not heard of any updates in the last, uh, few weeks. A few weeks ago, they reached out for some more information. We responded and then it's been silent since then. So that's been a multi-year project. I think COVID kind of threw, uh, a wrench into things as well, um, but we will keep you updated. All things considered, we should be receiving a hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement for that. Down our direct parking lots, um, so the design engineering for that project is nearly completed. Uh, we are estimating that the project will be out for bid here in the next few weeks. Um, and then bids will be open, I believe, in the later part of September. So that's going to be, uh, late September, October construction. Uh, we don't anticipate from Fairgram's standpoint, um, a lot of construction time for that, probably two weeks or so for construction, depending on how the contractor stages things. Um, the key component of that is the asphalt paving. So we did set our completion date in compliance with IDAC's paving operations. And, you know, the asphalt plate's closing down, uh, by Thanksgiving. So completion date will be set on that, but you will see bids coming back to you sometime next month, um, for approval. Um, this is a new project that we're working on, um, Willaburk Road restriping. If you've driven Willaburk Road, um, you will know that that striping is very poor right now. Um, I believe Steve's guys actually did some touch-up repairs to the major intersections. Um, but we're going to develop an actual bid proposal to do that entire restriping project. We may also be adding in other roads like Door Road, some of our higher traveled areas. We don't know for sure yet, but, um, we will have a restriping project that will go this year. Uh, and then finally, the next year's streets project, 2026, uh, staff here in the next couple of weeks, is going to be working on getting a quote from a material testing company to do pavement cores on our, um, future road projects. The reason for that is right now, we just have an estimated or anticipated scope of project and cost estimate. Obviously, before we go into budget time, we need to refine those numbers and get you guys accurate numbers that you can budget for. Um, so we're, the staff is going to be working on getting those pavement cores back, hopefully within the next month or so. And then by the time that the budget is presented, we'll have refined cost estimates and roads selected on what we would like to improve. At that same time, um, I know Jeff and Steve will be working on televising all of this sanitary storm sewer. Um, that's on those project sites, just so we're not, you know, just so it's not like the Hayes Avenue project where we select a road project and we find out we've got a bunch of, you know, sewer repairs or storm sewer repairs. We're going to have all that information up front.
Real, real quick, with, with that, so does that involve notifying Illinois American Water?
Absolutely. Yep, so actually Jeff and I have a meeting tomorrow with Illinois American Water to review a couple of their proposed projects, um, that are upcoming. And in that same time, we're going to be talking about our next year projects. So, yes, and we will eventually be presenting our five-year plan to them as well, so that their engineering department can claim their improvements accordingly.
And just to the public, um, the roads that we'll be getting pavement cores on are the two phases of Eastern Avenue Pocket plus Center Street. So we're going to get pavement cores on all three of those, you know, years worth of, that was year one, two, and three on our five-year plan. We're going to get pavement cores on the same half of all three to help the board figure out if we want to try to shift to Center or tackle phase one of this Eastern Avenue Pocket.
Okay, and then just a couple more, um, miscellaneous projects, uh, the Charles Street Neighborhood Park. So, and this is actually on your agenda, um, but Fairgram has already started the design process of the parking lot and basically the entrance to the park. Uh, we submitted our hydraulic and hydrologic report to IDNR. We are awaiting comments from them. Ultimately, um, Fairburg, I'm sorry, the city will be seeking another OSLAC grant application. Uh, we have some minor updates to do to the narrative. Um, you have a proposal on your agenda tonight to update that. Unfortunately, the way this grant, uh, application works, we cannot just resubmit the same things, even though our scope is substantially the same. Um, we basically have to start from scratch with their new, um, it's called Amplifund software that they make you apply for. So, um, that's going to require a little bit of blood work. That grant is due September 13th. We have no issues of meeting that deadline, but we would like to submit for a grant for that. Um, if you recall, that is a one point two million dollar grant, six hundred thousand, fifty percent of that has to be matching from the city. Toronto Creek Flood Plan, no major updates here. Um, we continue to meet with Army Corps of Engineers, the Illinois State Water Survey, and FEMA, as they come up with new information or find new information or have different ideas of what we can do to mitigate the, um, FEMA flood wave, floodway map, um, increases. Um, we are finding that in meeting with those agencies to just see how we can help. So we have a head meeting in quite some time, um, but I anticipate staff in the city will be reaching out to them soon to just try to recap and see what updates there are. Um, and then other than that, as Shawna stated, um, we are inundated with permits and site development reviews and all sorts of construction going on. Um, that's taking up a majority of the staff time, um, up for getting through it. But, um, if you guys have any questions, concerns about current projects, past projects, or upcoming projects that you would like to see budgeted for next year, please just reach out to us and we'll, we'll respond accordingly.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Uh, well, I like, uh, like you, I, um, I'd like to respond to a couple of things that, uh, I'm, I'm kind of irritated and I've had, um, plenty of time. There's a lot of posts on Facebook that do not represent the truth. There, there's a lot that is true, but there's an awful lot that's downright false and ridiculous. First of all, South Polite residents have never been left unprotected. With the town of Lloyd, Lloyd and Mavis, uh, our medical and fire staff, if they're out or something, we are protected by one of the nearby, uh, fire departments through Mavis. All present and past fire personnel know this and the fire chiefs, I talked to, I talked to Wilson, Bergeron, uh, Pease, Deputy Chief Brian Kenny, and I asked them, I says, because I'm not a hundred percent sure on everything, I asked them. I said, are we protected? Yes, you're protected. And there will always be somebody there. But anyway, they all agreed to that. But some would ra-, some of these people would rather post half the truth instead of telling it and to get all our residents to get up in arms about it, thinking they're not protected. And those wearing the Save Our Fire Department, you had to over two years prior to this, signing the contract with the town of Lloyd to do the staffing that was issued. Um, the report from the fire chiefs associated bears that out. But we were a point of losing our ambulance certification because of the staffing issues. We had to do something at the time. The staffing at that time consists of full-time employees from other departments that were previously, a lot of them were previously trained at South Polite. They went to other departments to work, which is the way you should do to better yourself if you can. Others were employees that have full-time jobs in the private sector and work in their spare time if they were available. We had one full-time employee and, um, in our department, and we had three, oh, three more positions that were open that we tried to fill. We even asked, offered ten thousand dollars for a bonus and still couldn't fill it. We have a few employees that, um, worked many, many hours at that time, but could not cover all the vacancies. You cannot force part-time, on-call personnel to work. You cannot force them. They, and, um, the only, only person that you can give a schedule to is a full-time employee. I was also informed at the time about fake accounts on Facebook with people using aliases that were criticizing the city council to me, which shows no leadership qualities. And if you will not put your name to the statements, you, uh, it's hard to be a leader. The council is also, um, the council is also voluntary and all those up here are not serving because they need a couple hundred bucks just to do that. We serve because we want to serve the community. And I would suggest to those that plan on running for council, spend your time, remaining time, a little more wisely and look into how to run a city government and not how to tear it down. That, most of that's just me, but it's, um, the way I feel about it and I, I figure everybody else has their time, their time to speak. So I had mine. And, uh, now we'll move on. Moving on to discussion and motion items. Discuss approval ordinance 2861, authorizing the sale of two real properties on Miller Street. PIN number 04061790119 and PIN number 0406179020. Get a motion, please.
Some. Second.
Who's got this?
I can mention it, Mayor.
Tell you.
This is two small pins that we acquired through the land bank. Um, our hope was to clean up a couple of treacherous trees on the property and then, uh, sell them and insist that somebody buy both lots at the same time. So that's what you have before us. Steve's crew has gotten a couple of gnarly trees taken down. Uh, Shawna's working with our legal team to make sure that, uh, we have some language put in place to insist that somebody, uh, when they place a bid, that they would put the, the bid in on both parcels at the same time. But that's what this is.
Are they big?
We have no intention of keeping.
Are they big enough for, uh, to be rebuilt upon?
That's why we want them, that's why we want the two to go together, otherwise they're just.
Can we force them to go together?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, to make sure that we got them both together so that somebody can build on them.
It's in, it's in the document that's before you, that bids will only be accepted for both parcels together. That's in the ordinance, it's in, um, sub-paragraph three.
No, I was saying, but you have to have a, you have to have one address, don't you?
Yeah.
The parcel combination would take place at a later date.
Oh, okay, all right. Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Mr. Adelman?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prandis?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, discuss approval ordinance 2862, the municipal code, municipal grocery realtor's occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupational tax. Get a motion, please.
Motion. Second.
Okay.
I can tee this up, uh, as well for you, Mayor, and then I've asked Don to just also talk a little bit about the numbers we were be able, we were able to pull. Um, this again is a, a tax that we've been talking about for several months since Governor Pritzker removed it from the state, uh, taxing system and offered it up for municipalities to pick it up if they wish. We're at that point in October where if we don't reinstate the tax that already existed, uh, we will start to see a gap in that, um, that tax coming in, starting on January 1st. So that's what we have before us, it's absolutely not a new tax. Uh, this was, uh, originally collected by the state and they are just passing it out to the municipalities if they wish to reinstate it, um, under their own jurisdiction. But it wouldn't be going up, it would be staying the same, same tax that was in place. Uh, in terms of numbers, um, at the last council meeting, you guys asked if we would try to get some better numbers. It's really a complicated mess to pull numbers from the Department of Revenue. Um, and even then, you're kind of at the mercy of how people report it. But I did ask Don to talk just a little bit of, if you guys have any questions about the numbers that Miranda packed in the printout. It's a two-page printout we provided that has some, some areas, uh, if you just look at Rockton and Rosco and Cherry Valley, like you, you wouldn't even think that these numbers make sense, although they don't. Go ahead.
The, the sales tax identifiers do not break down the sales tax specifically. The sales tax identifiers do not break down the sales tax specifically for food. So, there's a code that is predominantly anticipated to be food, and for us, that would be about $37,000 a quarter of the sales tax. And when you look at some of these other municipalities, it gets even more in question because we don't have a grocery store that if we have food sales, it would be through gas stations predominantly. But when you look at Rosco, there's basically $91,000 a quarter, and they have a whole grocery store. So, no one knows exactly what the impact would be, but because of the fact that we really don't have a sales or grocery store, most of our sales are either classified that are similar to food, but are sales predominantly through gas stations. So, we just don't know what the impact would be, but on the residents of the city would be minor because of the fact that most of the gas station sales would be to people that are driving it on like a quick trip and other places like that where the out-of-community people are paying that, are buying those products. So, it's hard to tell, but my feeling is that we're better continuing it, knowing that it's not a minor, not a significant amount, and it's not impacting our residents dramatically.
Well, this is, one thing about this, this is not a new tax. I tried to find out when it was first implemented, and it goes back more than 20 years ago. It's inclusive in the sales tax. So, I probably, I wouldn't support this unless it wasn't, you know, it's not a new tax. It's an old tax that we would be taking away. And not, and like I say, everything we take away is something we have to make up someplace else. So, I mean, I'll, what, anybody else? Go ahead. So, now if we vote on this, to get this right, how do you vote?
Vote yes if you want the tax to be implemented in South Platte.
Okay, the stay is the same. Vote yes.
Correct, you vote yes.
Alright, I just wanna make that clear. Alright?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance.
We already have a motion.
Okay. Alright, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Higginson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prunus.
Yes.
Commissioner Aylman.
Yes.
Yes, discuss approved resolution 6632 approving the professional service proposal with Fairgram to prepare an Illinois Department of Natural Resources at IDNR open space land acquisition and development Ozley's grant application. Motion please.
Second.
Alright, who's got this?
Mayor, I can do this. This will be the third attempt that the city has made on an Ozley grant. But then one choice of Williamburg applied for us. That was four years ago, and then two years ago, we applied for a grant to be up for application. I really feel like this is an ideal matchup for an Ozley grant. I was floored that we didn't get it last time. I think it had something to do with the fact that we still had the cleanup grant that we were after, you know, in between the air circle and the conflict. So, now that that cleanup grant, over a million dollars, is in motion, I'm really hoping that the timing of this, you know, gives us this grant because sadly, that park really can't be developed to the tune of $3 million without the assistance of an Ozley grant or some sort of federal assistance. So, we're gonna go after it again. I will note that the first time Fairgram drafted a proposal for the application, it was closer to $7,000, so this is about that half. We've taken out a lot of the costs because they will be capping some information, but we're really gonna amp up the environmental efforts. We're gonna do more community input meetings, and Brandon and I have already started talking about getting a couple of those scheduled for September. And then we'll refresh our letters that come from all of our community partners and try to enhance those and get more of those. So, it matches really, really well the project with what Ozley is looking for. It's a park development, and I just couldn't believe it last time that we didn't get it. So, I think it's $3,000, it was well spent. We should, one of these rounds, be selected.
So, if you don't put it in, you won't get it, that's for sure. Anybody else on that? Tracy.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prunus.
Yes.
Commissioner Aylman.
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson.
Yes.
Yes, discuss regarding final decision on the sewer rate ordinance. Oh, that, yeah, that's right.
Good try, though.
Yeah, try to, no, I mean, we want, we need this. Discuss approved resolution 6633 approving the purchase of, what do you, how do you pronounce that? Swan? Swan's, uh...
Schwartz.
Schwartz? Sworzy, Sworzy.
It's the 89 monsoon.
The 89 monsoon street sweeper from RNOW Inc. at a cost not to exceed $380,628 for the city of South Platte Public Works. Motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, I guess that's yours, Steve.
Yeah, this is one we've been trying to put off for quite a while. The one that I was here when I started had been reconstructed by Schwartz from RNOW, and that had kind of fallen apart. And then we went after this huge one through Tricky Enterprises. We were hoping to get it by with a five-year plan, and it made it two seasons for us, and it's just become a major headache. This one is the price they're offering it to us at. It's the demo that they drive from place to place to show it to people. It never needed the sales no site. They're offering it to us at the dealer direct price, but they also sent me a source book with the IDOP and, or cop specs. So, you'll see that they're actually giving it to us at a discount on that as well. And this one is actually ready right now for delivery.
And the reason we're looking at this now is because the ambulance that we were supposed to pay for this year, we are gonna pay for next year. We're just swapping.
Yeah, we're swapping. The sweeper was gonna come in 2026, but now we're gonna take the money that would've went to the sweeper in 2026, put it to the ambulance, and swap them around.
Anybody else?
One thing I'll point out is because we did include the state bid in there, part of this resolution to ask the council to waive the bid process, which anything over $25,000, $1,000 typically has to offer bid unless we've approved that it's already going out to state. So, the source pulled that in there.
I won't name the other company, but I did reach out multiple times to the other company that builds themselves sweeper. And I had a recent, I spoke from them also.
I'm not sure if you have the feedback, but this has been a, a need, and our MS4s or more, it's only getting more and more difficult to meet the demands. So, I think the team definitely needs this, and we did triple-check and make sure there was no chance that our ambulance would be ready by December 31 before we swapped these funds, but the sweeper would have been a number one priority in our capital budget for '26. So, really, we are just switching ambulance funds that we've been rolling over for this year with what would have been pretty equivalent for this.
We've been dealing with junk for a long time down there, and it's, this one will have some kind of warranty, I would imagine.
Yes, yeah, it'll have a warranty on both motors, the hydraulics, that system and everything. I'm actually gonna talk to American Water. Brian and I talked about this a little bit. When we get the cold storage building toward home at the old shop, I want to put up a block area for washing the sweeper. Washing our plow trucks, all of the salt stuff, I want to see if they can get a fire hager across the street set up close to that block floor so we can do that the proper way and make this stuff last longer and get it cleaned the way they should be cleaned.
Sure. Sounds like a winner. Anybody else? Alright, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prunus.
Yes.
Commissioner Aylman.
Yes.
Commissioner Higginson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Yes, and now we're going to discuss regarding the final decision on the sewer rate ordinance. Motion, please.
Motion.
Okay, we talked about this quite a bit in length last time, and this is, this has to do with our lift stations over on South Platte that have reached a point where it will not last much longer. Jeff, you wanna sound on that, please?
I can elaborate. It's the rate increase for some of the sewer plant shortfall that we had predicted, hadn't predicted in the past. So, we gotta be caught up on that in order to get the load on the lift station, but also in this is potential for Class A sludge as well. There's some decisions to make about whether we're gonna do the rate increase to cover the lift station and/or the sludge, Class A sludge, as well as getting us caught up from not having an axiom, so we can make a hole to pay the sewer bill, sewer plant funding that we have currently. I've been back and forth about Class A sludge. Five, six years ago, I was fully, I knew that we could have it paid off in less than 10 years and probably more like seven years. Cost has gone up substantially, but it's a, it's a small amount of smaller percentage of what we're gonna go up for Class A sludge now versus if we ever are gonna look at it again. We looked at it back then. I guess if we had a crystal ball that was clear, maybe we wouldn't have taken it out back then and left again. But that wasn't real clear then, and nobody could have ever thought things are gonna get 30 or 40% higher than what they, I mean, we all knew they would go up, but nothing like what we've seen in the last five years. I think even in our personal lives, we've experienced a lot of that. The biggest critical part is that Lift Station 1, if we vote to do that, rate increase that we can do Lift Station 1, we could get rid of Lift Station 1 and 2, the two oldest lift stations we have. It'll provide for future growth on the left side, provide for easy accessibility for upgrades and larger capacity in the future. All of that comes into the plan, we have a backup generator and all the controls that you would expect to have in a lift station.
I've had some conversations with Don and Jeff around this. I think obviously, we all know Lift Station 1 needs to be fixed. That's first and foremost. We all know 2, the Sludge A consideration back at the time of construction of the sewer plant was taken off as a cost-saving measure at that point. Fair, fine, all good. I think we have gotten to the point now that all of us need to consider having Sludge A added to this because if we don't do it now, that cost is just going to keep skyrocketing. I understand that we're asking the people to pay more, myself included. We all know that pain, right? But it's also my understanding, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, the cost of shipping out or having somebody pick up our waste as it stands right now is costing us what, around $100,000, is that right? And that cost would probably only go up when you look at, you know, the impending federal regulations that could be coming. The state would follow whatever the federal regulations are. So, with those rising regulations, it could cost us more in the long run if we don't get Sludge A, right? If we get Sludge A, then people will potentially be paying us to pick up our stuff, right, to pick up our waste, which is saving $100,000 off the top right there. Then, in the long run, as we start generating more revenue, we'll be able to pay back, you know, that cost. So, my, my ask is that we all consider Sludge A. I get it. I understand where everybody's at. But my hope and ask is that we all give at least strong consideration. I mean, Lift Station 1 is a must, right? Sludge A, in my opinion, is also right there on that line of a must, not a want, because I'd rather have that savings off the top than having to worry about what the cost is in the long run if we have to take that out. That's my, that's my ask. Or Don, did you want to add anything at all?
No, I just, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, and we were all regretting having taken that out initially. My feeling is that if we push it down the line further, we're gonna regret having, not having done it because of the additional costs associated with the removal of the sludge and the increase in cost of that. And actually, you were saying that the minimum wage?
So, yeah, not minimum wage, but the sludge disposal is now considered a prevailing wage job. So, all of that goes in, and if any of you are familiar with prevailing wage jobs, it sets a minimum of what it costs, whether you're union or non-union. So, the scale at which the truck drivers and the applicators get paid to dispose of our sludge is at that prevailing wage rate. Now, if we have Class A sludge, there's very few regulations at this time that allows us to possibly have a farmer come in. We would load it up in his truck. He could do what he needs to do without us having to track and field apply and make sure it's incorporated and all the things that we go about to deal with Class B. And those costs, you know, rates, prevailing wage rates continue to go up and up and up. So, I don't have crystal balls to where they end up at, but you know, our cost savings could continue to go up and up just based off of that one state statute that requires that.
Well, we all, well, go ahead.
For purposes of the discussion of the evening, yeah, the mayor was asking in terms of next steps. So, our office needs to draft an ordinance with the new schedule of sewer rates then going forward. So, we need to know what the direction is of this council in terms of what you're looking for to charge.
Yeah, so what we provided was based on the ask of the last company meeting, we asked for, if you wanted a five, a seven, and a 10-year map with and without a Class B sludge. So, what you have is two big documents that we handed out in the package. One side of it includes Class A sludge. Obviously, it's the one that ends a little bit higher, the dollar marks end a little bit higher. And the other side, or the other page, is width. So, one page with, one page without, both have a glimpse at metered and non-metered users, and they have the same sliding scale of what they look like over five, seven, 10-year increases. I do wanna say, I mean, my parents are on a very fixed income as well. Everyone feels the same string, but I appreciate the fact that you guys are looking no longer than a 10-year span because that's not what our predecessors did, right? They put this on a 30-year schedule and hope and pray that over 30 years, the cost wouldn't go up for doing business. Thank you for being real about that. Nobody wants to have a decreased build, but you know, in all likelihood, five years from now, 10 years from now, the city's gonna face the same challenge again. So, thank you for not spreading this out over another 30 years.
So, the question for the council this evening is which of the rates does the council wish to implement with or without? And then, for what period of time? The five-year, the seven-year, or the 10-year?
So, it says 2017 ordinance. Is that the last time the rate was up?
Yes, that's right now. Yep.
Okay. And historically, five-year, 10-years, how often are rates moved down?
So...
I know we've been failing at looking at them, but...
I think they told us, what, five to seven?
It says five.
Did she say three to five?
That every three to five years, our rates should be reduced internally.
Our rates are going up for the next 30 years, just with that original ordinance, so.
Twenty seventeen ordinance is the third year, so basically, this is another layer.
This would take the place.
This will make the 17-year schedule go away. The dark blue dots is where we're at right now, and the increases beyond the range have been centered in the increase.
So, it's not this plus whatever you have 17 years.
That includes the curriculae block.
So, if I could just check the polls of the council real quick, is there a consensus for with Class A bio-salads upgrade or without?
I mean, with.
With.
With, 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 with. Okay, so that's the schedule that we're looking at. We're looking at with Class A bio-salads upgrade, which if I'm looking at the chart correctly, looks like it starts at a, is at 1456 according to the Fairgram schedule.
The five-year? What number are you looking on?
Well, I'm looking at the Fairgram 2025 recommended rate change.
The packet's different than what I'm looking at.
Okay.
The online packet's got the more details. Is that page 42 or 43?
Um...
I'm looking at the online. I'm looking at page 42 online. That's the one that shows the five, seven, 10.
I don't have a page, I don't have a page.
The paper copy doesn't show the five, seven, 10.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, the one, the one that I have in front, it says 1456.
That starts at one.
As the starting point.
For a year five.
Yeah.
If we do a five-year...
If we did a five-year.
Alright, too, okay.
If the five-year would be.
I wanted to find that.
Yep, and then in twenty-twenty-nine, it would end with twenty-four forty-two.
Correct, okay, that's the five-year.
Yep, so is that the consensus that you'd like the ordinance drafted? So your rates right now in your twenty-seventeen ordinance, the rate is twelve dollars and twenty-five cents. It would go from twelve dollars and twenty-five cents to fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Currently, under the twenty-seventeen ordinance, your rates would end in twenty-twenty-nine at fifteen oh three. Now, with, again, the five-year schedule, they would end in twenty-twenty-nine at twenty-four forty-two. I, that's for metered. I'm just talking about metered customers right now, not non-metered.
So we have to decide if we're doing five, seven, or ten?
Correct, yes, you've already decided that you're doing the with Class A bio solids upgrade, so now I just need to know which schedule, the five-year schedule, the seven-year schedule, or the ten-year schedule?
Um, I don't know, I, five is not enough. You know, I mean, it's too short a time, I believe. My viewpoint, because that's, that's hit pretty hard.
Well, and again, the difference in the three schedules, if you're looking at them, Mayor, is it's condensed, right? So with the five-year schedule, you end at twenty-four forty-two, with the seven-year schedule, you end at twenty-four forty-two, so it stretches out the, the impact of the increase.
That's why I'm not going to rip the Band-Aid off.
It's all the same, it's all, it's going to be.
The number's going to be the same in the year, is, is it five years from now, seven years from now?
And I think five years is a strong impact, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to point out, uh, no matter what decision you make, we're shortening up the rate increases.
Correct.
Down to, from what's left, seventeen years down to ten years, so I wanted to spin a positive on there for everybody to think about there.
I'm talking to a bunch of old people up here.
It, it, it's, you're still shortening up the total.
Yeah, I know, it, uh, I know, we, I mean, it's, it's a tough decision to make.
I mean, it, this is, it's tough, right?
Yeah.
Fairgram, you know, I'm always the one that sits up here and says that, and this is a professional, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, right? She's sat here and told us three or five years. We're stretching it five, seven, nine, right? I think so that we can sit here and handle over what we wanted to decide. Um, to me, I'm go-, I, I'd like to stick at five, I don't, again, want to, I think we have to, but I'm one voice. You guys, I, I'm fine anyway, right? Let me make that clear. For me, let's just do it at five and move on, but again, I'm just one voice.
I'll say for me, I'm at five and seven, I think ten is an option, I think that's extending it too far.
You think seven is too far?
No, I said ten is.
Two, ten, I believe ten is too far.
I, I, I'm, I'm in, I'm in the five to seven, and I could make, I'm fifty-fifty, I can make it our, either direction, I'm in five and seven.
I just think it's.
At some point, and we keep saying, you know, we got to quit passing the buck, et cetera, et cetera, and we're taking that stand now, right, wrong, or different, we're taking that stand, and we're going to fix some things, and this is one of them, so, you know, it's five or seven, and I could be, I could, I could be convinced either way or the other.
Brian, what do you think?
I don't know, putting a big burden on the, on the people. This would be higher.
Could be higher, you're right. I mean.
I mean, with everything else, the way everything else is going on.
Do you, do you want, uh, do you want the sludge in there or not?
I don't know.
Um, that's why I, I kind of feel the same way as far as the seven-year, I mean, I know it just, it's just two more years, but it, it's just a slower increase to the point that we're going to, we're going to end up in the same place. And I just, I mean, I, ten years, yeah, that's a little long, but, I don't know, it would, we burden everybody with the sewer plant, which we had to, and I, and like you say, I wish, and I was proponent of that, you know, cut costs on the sewer plant when we built that, sat here and argued a point and get rid of that, and get rid of that, and all of a sudden, now we have to have it, so it's, you know, it's, we're trying to make it as affordable as possible, but.
So just then, for the record, a seven-year stretch would start from thirteen ninety and would end at twenty-four forty-two for metered customers, and would go from seventy-three fifty in twenty-twenty-five to one twenty-nine oh seven for non-metered customers, and that would include bio solids. So is that the consensus then? Again, we're just looking for a consensus, this is going to come back in an ordinance format for your review, we just need to know what numbers you want put in your ordinance. Okay, alright, it sounds like there's a consensus, we'll put together the ordinance based off of that schedule.
It's a tough situation, but it's something you got to make, you got to make them decisions, and that's the decisions that we're making. I guess it's a seven-year, and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it when it comes back to us. Alright, uh, anybody else got anything to say about it? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?